Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting's order and invite everyone to please rise. Join us in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, would you call the roll, please? Here?
James Shiloh.
Here.
Julian Navy.
Here.
Michael DeVito.
Here.
Eric Jones.
President.
Kristen Ren.
Here.
And Florence Cusick.
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
Senator?
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I believe at this time we're going to have some order forms somewhere on and take our order forms for us.
If you completed an order form, we have two very special servers tonight, Carter and Anthony, and they will be coming around to collect those from you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
I hope they start coming to every meeting.
Well, maybe for a small...
Be sure, it could work something. All right, next item then would be consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Bren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Navy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to address the board on any particular issue? Well, thank you all for coming, by the way. It's great to be here with you at Southeast, and it's always a pleasure to come over here and visit to this school, but to all of our schools. We try to have a meeting at every school during the year, and you're actually our first ones for this academic year, so thanks for hosting us. I know that a lot of work goes into this, and it's really good to have such a good turnout and a good crowd, so thank you all for coming, I appreciate them. Next item then would be communications, correspondence, and informational items, letters and newsletters. The usual? The usual. FOIA requests, lots of FOIA requests. But they're all answered, so we're all up to date. Committee reports.
I have a couple of committee reports, Jim. So the food pantry board met last month, discussed a lot of the things that we're facing there, mostly around increasing costs and increased usage of the pantry, obviously with the given economic situation. So just to give you guys kind of a flavor, over the last couple of years, the cost for the same tonnage of food that we serve at the pantry has gone up about threex. What used to cost us like $800 a week is now $2,400 for the same amount of food. Continue to expand, use the space at the warehouse. I know we've been talking to Mark about trying to kick him out of some more of that space so we can continue our takeover. Seeing a lot of usage out of even non-food items especially, like diapers and other toiletries that seem to be a big hit are often very limited supply, so we're trying to figure out ways to be equitable with how we get that out, so that not just the first 10 people in line are able to take stuff, and then people who can't get off of work until 5:30 are getting shorted, but still doing that in a fair way, so still looking at that. Communications, looking at more ways to get better communication out there. I've been doing some work on the website, our Facebook page remains pretty active. I know we've been working as well with the district communication, I think, to get some stuff out there. When school's launched this year, I think we had some time, is that right, Ms. Crawford, for the staff got to be a little educated on that. I know they had an opportunity to donate through their salary. We also have been getting great donations through the Give Local Day, 100 Women Who Care, I think we might get another opportunity to get some funding from them, which has really helped us out in the past. We've also got some good opportunities with some community partnerships, and I know Target in the past has been very generous, and I heard from my neighbor who's a manager there that he's reaching out to our local Target to see if we can get some more help, especially with those non-food items. And then the sustainability committee met this morning, which was our first meeting in about two years, I think, we kind of figured out. So we spent most of that just trying to revisit where we were two years ago before COVID kind of derailed everything. A lot of the work we were doing at that time was around the lunch programs and trying to get reusable trays instead of disposable trays. We've been doing some trash audits, so figuring out what it is worth throwing away each lunch period because it is hundreds of pounds, and a lot of that ends up actually just being food waste, you know, half-drink milk cartons just being tossed in the garbage that then has to be weighed away by, or hauled away by the pound. So looking at ways, the problem with the reusable trays is that our facilities right now don't have the necessary dishwashing sanitization equipment to handle those, so it has to be hand washed, which is difficult when you're short on staff. We've been replacing fluorescent lights with LEDs as those come up, looking at more opportunities to interact with the community and maybe implement some more intentional curriculum pieces around it, something that's a future agenda item for us around sustainability. Maybe trying to educate the public as well on cars that are idling for 45 minutes at pickup on a day where maybe the windows could just be rolled down and trying to reduce the impact of that. And also, Mark's been looking at a lot of solar options for the district. I know we've had some conversations around that, so just continuing to explore what we could do there for our energy use. So I think that covers most of it.
Thank you. A lot of good ideas there. Interesting activity. Hopefully we can get some more donations for the food pantry so that we can try to keep pace with inflation a little bit.
Yeah, Mrs.
It's bad enough in your own household, but when you see it, when you're trying to help people like that, it really hits home hard.
Right, and Mrs. Janisch has been putting together recipes for those families with the food that's available, so those are all up on the website now, and there's some other good ideas from like Barbs City Food Mart, the Cow Pantry, and some others that we're trying to implement and add to continue to roll that out.
Fantastic, thank you. Other committee reports?
Yeah, I attended the first Sports Boosters meeting I've ever been to this past Sunday, which was really entertaining, what a great group of people. Jason Fowler is their current president, and I think they have a shakeup of their executive board, and basically just, this was apparently one of their Sports Boosters meetings where they have all the students come and present what they're doing in each of their groups. So like football had some representation, apparently they're 3-0, so they're doing really well. Boys golf, they have 18 golfers, placed second against Belvedere. Girls golf, 8-0, so far undefeated. Boys cross countries ranked 14th in the state. Boys soccer's 1-0, girls tennis is 8-0. Girls volleyball, 1-1, but promising outlook. So the kids, well, the students spoke about what they wanted to showcase about their sports. Big thing, $5 minimum credit card purchases, looks like it's going to be happening for all events, because they're getting killed on those credit card fees. They want to push lifetime memberships, so they asked that we try to get the word out about lifetime memberships to the Sports Boosters. Also their photo contest on social media, if anyone, if you've tuned in, you can submit a photo and win on that, so that's something. And they're having some issues figuring out scoreboard manipulation and running, but Chauncey's been actively working it and says he's pretty much got the hang of it after Ralph has left, so he left a huge void, but they're working hard to fix it. And then we have Spartan Senate meeting on October 7th, so.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Not necessarily committee report, but a CF fundraiser was the past weekend. It's a great time. If you've never gone, I will encourage you to go next year. It's a great night, great cause. I felt, I don't know all the stats, but I felt like attendance maybe a little bit down from previous years that I've been there, but another great night. They do a great job, we put on a great night, on a farm, having fun. So definitely just encourage, keep an eye out for that date when they announce it for next year.
What other committee reports? Thank you. Exciting then would be Assistant Superintendent for HR.
Thanks, Jim. Really excited to be back in the schools and at Southeast. You know, I think this date last year, much different feeling coming into it, and while there's still several challenges with the start of the year, it feels much more normal, I think. And so when Christie and I got together to kind of talk through what this should look like or could look like, we talked a lot about innovative practices, you know, things that Southeast is doing, maybe outside the box, different from what we would have done years ago, and maybe unique to Southeast as well. So Ms. Crawford is going to highlight some of those things with some assistance from the wonderful staff as well, so.
Thank you.
This is her favorite thing to do, is to get up.
It is, I've been looking forward to this for 365 days. No, last year I missed out, but I wasn't feeling too well, actually I couldn't talk at all, so.
Well, that's right, you're replacing me for that, that's right.
I really did last year, so. Well, again, thank you to all of you for coming tonight. We appreciate you coming to Southeast and joining us for this evening. I want to send a very special shout out to my staff. They were not bribed to come here, I promise, they're not getting time off or anything, but they are a wonderful group of people, so thank you to everybody for giving up your time tonight to come here, and a special thanks to all of you who helped me prepare this, which was pretty much everybody. So we will get started. First of all, again, welcome. I shared a picture here, this is the entire Southeast community, pretty much, last year at our Rainbow Run fundraiser that we had in the spring of 2022. And it was so good just to be outside, it was a beautiful day, every grade level got to run and do obstacle courses, and they just had a blast. It was just a time to really get out and give up. So this year, we are starting with 301 amazing students in our building, that's a little bit down from where we've been, but we're glad to have everybody back. We have 52 dedicated staff, we've got a lot of those people here tonight, giving their all to our students each and every day. That does include some staff that we share with other buildings. And it was just nice when I sat down to kind of start doing this, it finally feels a little bit like normal, which has been nice, because it has been a rough few years for everybody, I think we would all agree with that. So tonight, what we are going to do, I've kind of spread our presentation into three areas. The first one is just going to be us sharing some of the ways that we're making a difference with some of our students who maybe need a more personal touch to their learning. So you can see we're going to do the snack cart, which they are like dying to get into. I will tell you, we normally charge money for this, if you don't have money, I told them Mrs. Crawford's got it, and they will come knocking at my door, that's fine, snacks are on me, we're good. We will be highlighting our LEAF program tonight, I think that's something worth talking about, and a social work pass. The second area of our presentation will just be on some relationships that we've been trying to build with the community that are unique only to Southeast, and that would be our cocoa and caring event that we have every year, usually end of November, 1st of December, and also our book blazers. And then finally, just a little bit about social emotional learning and how we see a true need for that in our building, and what we've done this year to help make that a priority. So that will be where we are going. I think they're ready. So again, Anthony and Carter are going to come in and be our servers. If they need a little help with names, please feel free to help. Guys, I told them if they don't have any money, it's on Mrs. Crawford, and I know you'll come to my door tomorrow and get it, so I'll make sure I'm gone to the bank tonight, okay? Okay, they don't really care what.
Sure, that'd be great, I'm sorry, I really don't have money.
That's okay.
Just means it's good.
Yeah, so this art in cart started four years ago. It was kind of born out of giving students some responsibility and ownership over their learning. Some students needed extra jobs to do, some students needed experience with just talking to people they don't know. It gives them real life experience with collecting money, stocking food items, and just giving them that ownership and that individuality during the school day. So on Wednesdays, all of the staff in the building have these little cards. On Wednesdays, students are responsible for going around collecting all the cards. We do different items throughout the year. Students have requested apple cider, hot cocoa, or cookies, things like that. And then Thursdays, they tally items, stock the cart, and on Fridays, they deliver towards the end of the day, usually right after lunch when we're all getting that little bit of Friday funk going on. And they deliver, they take ownership of it, there's usually, there's always a staff member with them, but the staff member is just there to make sure that, you know, something falls off, or we run out of something. So it definitely gives them the ability to decide and interact with people that they wouldn't normally interact with, so. And they are very, very specific, and if somebody says they forgot their money that day, one of them will for sure find them on Monday.
Sometimes it doesn't even take until Monday.
Anthony, what do you think about the cart? Do you like doing it? Yes. Carter, what about you?
What?
Do you enjoy doing the cart?
Yes.
Yes? Metaphors.
I'd just say, I've never seen them this quiet.
I am. I'm glad it's on video.
Raspberry, raspberry, lemonade, and wild strawberry.
That's why I get wild. I would say that's one with the caffeine, right? Yes.
Mrs. Crawford can't spot me too.
All right, added to my bill.
I got you, Steve.
No, just as an outsider watching this, I've really seen the self-confidence of some of our students really build with this activity. We have a young lady who's done it, who never would have uttered a word, and now she smiles and approaches me and is interacting, and it's wonderful. These two, though, they don't have that issue in case you can't tell, they're ready to go and very kind and always find me for my money, that's for sure.
Unfortunately, Mrs. Spuce got purchase, but we're on the list. It's all about us.
Look at that. And sometimes we even have specials, I don't know if you saw any of the signs, but we have some candy specials coming up, I think because of maybe Halloween, but I know they have like my favorite Reese's Peanut Butter Cups coming, and Sour Patch, if anybody's into that, so.
So we might as well, we did do it last year, did a couple of times, very end of the year, and then this year, we kind of switched it off as welcome, but the first group of students that did it are now. Does the high school still do the coffee service?
I don't know if they started that.
Does the high school still do the coffee service, Mr. Bolster?
Yes, and we'll get that going probably.
Could you bring that over to Southeast? There's a shiny coffee, and there's not time for me to get it.
We're not quite that high tech, we have the Keurig in the pot that's about the extent of our coffee. Oh, yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
We appreciate them giving up their evenings tonight. Just come over and help.
We need to get these guys like the square, we go with the...
That'll be next year.
$5 minimum.
Yeah, I think they're pretty excited, because when they help, they usually get a little free treat.
That's with the three of us.
I know they were talking about that out here, about what they could get. I did hear, I did hear that conversation.
You got a diet on?
They like tips.
The same thing.
Would you like many tips before you?
Sure, that'll be a good question, I would. Okay, that's great, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Take your rest.
Are you going to follow that?
No, I was just going to sit down, follow that.
We made like 100 bucks.
Sounds like Ted, right?
All right, well, we're going to move on and talk about our LEAF program here at Southeast. We have the 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders, so we have eight students, and we really do have to provide some personalized learning to this group. They need a different approach to learning, pretty much every day, sometimes every minute, to be honest. And I have asked Kristen Chris Chu, she is our Southeast LEAF teacher, to present to you tonight, and knowing Kristen, she will not say one good thing about herself, so I'm going to say it before she gets up here.
And my face is turning red already.
I'm just going to say Kristen is probably, no, not probably, she's the best behavior teacher I have ever seen in my life. She can take a student and de-escalate them, and Sarah and I have both watched this a million times, Sarah's getting better at it. I can't do what Kristen does. To give you an example, a kid can be very highly escalated, maybe throwing punches, kicking, and they can say something like, "I'm going to throw you in a hole," probably saying it a little bit meaner, but I'm going to keep it clean and keep it like that. And Kristen can take that and put a spin on it, and within two minutes, she has that child talking about maybe a camping trip that they took, where they dug a hole and built a fire, and the student is participating, the student is happy, and they are getting their emotions regulated. And I don't know how she does it, I honestly do not know how this woman does what she does, but she does it every day, millions of times every day, and our kids are so fortunate to have her, because she's, she just got away with what she does, and it's absolutely amazing. And she's very confidential with what she does with our students. I can tell you, and I think they would agree, the rest of our staff really doesn't even know what's going on sometimes down there, because she does keep it confidential, she deals with it, she calls in extra assistance when she needs it. Sarah is her right-hand lady, Angelique is her right-hand, Angelique waves so we know. I don't know if Shanna or Annie's here, they're also in there, but they're brand new, but even Angelique is learning so much. It's amazing to see what this room is becoming, and just the things that they were able to do last year. We had one little boy who was in LEAF, who ended up being in the regular gen ed classroom 98% of the time by the time he finished with Kristen. That, you never hear that, like Lynn didn't believe it, she thought it was a typo in the IEP. So that's the kind of things that Kristen is doing. So I've asked her to come up and talk a little bit about it, and like I said, she would never talk about herself, but she is a wonderful person that we do have in our district, so I do want to recognize her tonight, because I don't really feel like we talk about our LEAF program too much. It is a challenging program, but it is something where we do a great job and we are making strides.
Well, thank you. I think what Christie forgot to leave out is sometimes that's like three hours in. Like that's like just the best word, but Christie forgot to also mention herself, because she is down in my room all the time, she's taken the time to make that relationship with the kids, which is vital when you're handing out consequences, which is oftentimes what Christie needs to do, and the kids, when Christie walks in, they used to be afraid of principals, but what's really cool is they're not afraid of Christie anymore, she's just a part of our classroom family, and that's what we call it, we're a school family. So I know you've already said it, but Angelique couldn't run this program without you or Sarah, so I feel like that needs to be said, because, and my other two paras, of course. So this classroom runs better because of the people that are in it. So we have, as you've seen, the server principals, also the regular ed teachers, they're, they deal with my crazy ideas, and they are very, like if they have an issue, they just come talk to me, so it's really neat to see that collaboration. The LEAF program has been here now for three years, and with it being here for three years, it's a challenging program, and some of our kids, they have some challenges, and so when they come into the classroom, it's not always easy, but they have always made, like, they've made my job easy, because they come in with an open mind. So with that being said, we couldn't do that without this fabulous staff here, right? So it all kind of correlates, it's possible because of everybody, so I just want to make sure that's known. Will you click? Thank you. Okay, so all of our students in our classroom have behavior plans, so we have eight students, 3rd through 5th grade. What that means is every student in the classroom comes and goes as they need to, so every one of them has a completely individualized plan that's meant for them. So that could look like they're with me for math, they need a little bit of support for reading, so they could be in regular ed for reading, but see Mrs. Spuce for reading, which has also been happening, which is cool, and then they go to gen ed specials on their own. Sometimes they need a para with them, sometimes they don't, it just kind of depends, sometimes it's even dependent on the day. So that point sheet is what we track their behavior from, and our three classroom rules are being safe, respectful, and responsible, and that is language that we use throughout the day to help make sure that our students are successful. We use the curriculum for students, so that's what the FISDA4 is, we use curriculum when it's appropriate for our regular ed students, and then we adapt as necessary if it's not. So we kind of, we're like a little bit of a resource room, but with the behavior touch, and kind of a regular ed teacher, if that makes sense. But we focus on behavior first, and then we work on academics second. The daily report, we talk to parents all the time, it's sometimes twice a day, sometimes three times a day, phone calls, emails, you name it, but parent support is what makes our program, again, successful. So sometimes it can be a little much, but it makes the students know that we're trustful and we're honest, because I will tell them exactly what I will tell the parent, which is helpful, and then this is the report that goes home every day. We work for classroom contingencies, so we have a full group contingency, which means the group is working together to earn something, and then that's what the bingo's for, and then based off of their point sheets and what levels they end on, they get to earn coupons, and the coupons the kids come up with. So like, they want, one of them wants a Venus flytrap, and he told me I could get it from Amazon, I haven't checked yet. He's working really hard for that, which I told him, I'm like, I might be disappointing you, because I don't know where you get that. And then this bottom one here is brain breaks, a lot of our kids need coping strategies throughout the day, so we work on initiating those coping strategies that students can take independently. So sometimes it's a simple little brain break, which that one's like you roll a dice and it tells you what to do, and so they like that, or oftentimes you'll see, we do many laps in the hallway, thank God there's a circle, because we do a lot of circles. So again, we just use these things, so this is for behavior. More. Okay, so this is our social emotional. The top part is the zones of regulation, that's how our students learn to identify behavior or their emotions, and then we work on their coping strategies to get them back to the green zone. So the green zone is when we're ready to learn, and when they're in the yellow or red zone, that's when we need to find different strategies to get us back to the green zone. So I always say to the kids, like, I'm in the blue zone, I'm tired today, I need to go for a walk, because that's my coping strategy. So we use our examples and that incidental teaching, we bring ourselves into it, and that helps make connection with the kid and build the relationship stronger, which is also very important. Expected and unexpected, we use that language all the time, inside the classroom, outside the classroom, so it's being safe, respectful, responsible, but that's unexpected, right? So what you're doing is unexpected, you need to stop. And when we use that language... And when we use that language throughout the day, that's, the kids start understanding what that means. So we're very predictable and consistent and structured with that, and that's really helped the students change their behavior. And then these two things, Mrs. Lave comes in twice a day to do SEL in our classroom, which is a lot. She spends a lot of time in our room building that relationship, but also doing that social work piece. But she also pulls for groups as needed too, so it just kind of depends. But we talk about the size of the problem and how the reaction that we have should match the size of the problem. So I brought the pencil. Does that mean we should be screaming and shouting or throwing chairs? No, that means it's a small problem, which means it's a small reaction. So you can say, "Mrs. Kishub, I need to sharpen my pencil," right? So those are just an example of how we use these. But with the incidental teaching, we do that over and over again. And when we do that, that's how the kids are learning better. And it's in different, it starts generalizing the behaviors in different settings. That was a lot. But again, oh, and then something I really did wanna mention is we had a lot of contact with our SROs last year. And I just, we have such a great collaboration with Sycamore Police. And they came in before and established relationships with our kids. And we did a field trip there, and they came into our classroom on multiple occasions last year for good and bad things. But their support to our classroom last year, literally, we could not have done last year without them. So I just felt like you guys should know that. Chief Winters is awesome, but the officers were vital to our success last year.
That's it? Oh, wait, calm down battles.
So the kids all make their own calm down battles, and then when they're upset, they get to use these at their desk or in their classrooms. So it's kind of neat. They're excited about it. They're all different. But if you shake it and then you stare at it, it helps you calm down. Now I'm really done.
And this is Sarah Lave. She is our full-time, yes, full-time, thank you, social worker because she is used all the time, not only in our LEAF room, but throughout our whole building. We really do have kids in crisis every single day, which we'll talk about in a minute. And she is there for all of them, and they love to go to her office, let me tell you. So that's kind of where this new pass came along, so I will let her speak about this. But this is a new thing for us at Southeast this year.
That's a perfect lead-in. So this was something that we identified as a need. We have seen a really big increase in students requesting to meet because adults are really great problem solvers, and I'm listening here, and I can give them time, and they really respond to that. So we noticed, especially with our fourth and fifth graders, they were often requesting to come see me. They were leaving class, kind of like checking in my office, was I available or not? They'd just stop by during their bathroom break. So we talked about how we really needed a streamlined process for students to request and receive the support that they need. So this is kind of the creation of what was that idea, and that is our social work pass. So if a student is having a hard time, if there's something going on and they feel like they need some support, they go up to their teacher and just say, "Hey, I need to see the social worker," and they give them this pass. We also wanted to incorporate a learning moment with this pass because, you know, this is an opportunity for us to use this just more than a, hey, you know, they need to see you. So the first thing they have to do is stop and think about what is going on, and so they can kind of identify the area. Is it they're having a hard time with other kids? Is it something going on at school? Is it they just want to say hi? Because if that's so, then I'd rather just know that, and we can still do a pop in and I can say hi. And then the next piece is identifying the size of their problem. Mrs. Kishub already talked about that. We are trying to get students to think about that. And even if a student identifies the problem is really, really big, and it was, you know, somebody bumped into them waiting in line, that's still a moment for us to kind of talk about it and say like, hey, you know, you talked about this. If it's a big problem, that means we are calling the fire department or all these things. Do we need to do that? And I'm like, well, no. So I'm like, okay, well, then we're probably talking more about a smaller, medium problem. Once a student submits this, it goes into my, like I have a little cubby that they go into. And students are seen no longer than the next day, especially depending on what's going on. If it's something more urgent, then they're seen much more quickly. The also really cool thing about this is students have the peace of mind that they know that I have the pass and that I will be giving them an appointment card. And then they can just go back to focusing on their studies rather than wondering, when are they gonna get their chance to come and meet with me? And the last cool thing about it is that oftentimes, now that they submit this card, I get it, I schedule their appointment. And if I get to them by the end of the day, they've already solved the problem. And so then we can talk about that, and they can tell me how they solved the problem. And we can say that that's a really great thing, or how could we have solved it differently? So it's helping students work on solving their own problem, which is ultimately what we want. So our teachers have been super great with this system. I feel like it's a system that's working really well for us.
So that, that's our first section. Anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask about any of the three things we spoke about?
I do.
Go ahead.
So the LEAF program is district-wide students?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're the only three through five in all of the elementary buildings.
And do students come to you throughout the school year?
They, they can, yes.
Okay. And how many students did you have like last year?
We had six last year.
Okay, all right.
And that doesn't seem like a lot, but they are very needy and it's.
Seems like plenty.
We are at eight right now, and I honestly, it would be very difficult for us to take another student.
Yeah, I bet.
K one and two has their program over at West with Emily.
And do they, so students, I know they have an IEP, but based on their, based on their behavior, are they, the student that spent 98% of their time in a classroom, I assume that came from you saying, oh, you can, you can do this.
Well, it can be a multitude of things. I would love to take full credit, but it is not just me. A lot of it can be maturity too. That was a COVID student, so he specifically, like that was just a really weird year because he was in COVID and then was with me full-time, and COVID was strange. And then he was very excited to go back to his friends, which is great. So I think that was part of it, and he knew his expectations. He knew me from the year before. So he knew when I say no, like the line in the sand is here, you know what this means. And so he learned me well enough to know, I say what I mean and I mean what I say. And he was just motivated and mature enough. I don't, I mean, he did phenomenal. And I think still is.
And I think he also built a great relationship with the fifth-grade teachers. I mean, he, yeah, he loved them. They wanted to be with them and doing the activities that his classmates were doing.
Yeah, that was essential for him.
And, and for the social work, do you feel like you're spread too thin?
Which are we talking about?
It, it's, it's very difficult. It's hard because I feel like I need to be in the LEAF room often. You know, I really prioritize being in there because those relationships are so crucial. And if I'm not in there, even like if I miss, and I have IEP meetings all day, and I go in at the end of the day, it's hard because they're like, well, I haven't seen you all day. So I pop in there at least twice a day at very minimum. So I already have that component, and then also supporting all of my students who have IEPs, and then my RTI students. And then like we kind of created the pass, it was essential because I would have a waiting line of students outside my room. So I will say my office is very busy, and I'm very grateful that I get to be here full-time. Because not every school has a full-time social worker.
That's why I asked.
I'm very busy.
Thank you so much for doing so much for our kids.
Love it.
You do love it.
And, and just to comment on that, our gen ed staff is great too. I mean, they welcome these students and, you know, take the advice of what Kristin says and in working with them. So they are gems too, because it's not always easy to have them in the classroom if something goes wrong or the student goes into crisis. So thank you to them as well. Next, we're going to kind of talk about how we're involved in the community. And these would be things that would be specific to Southeast that other schools don't have. So Sarah is one of the people that helps with the K kids, so I'm gonna ask her to talk about co-going period.
Yeah, I'm one of the advisors. I've only done it for a year, so I feel like I can't take any credit for this program. It has been going on for over 20 years. It is unique to the Sycamore community, and it's really a great program. It's every year around kind of Christmas time. And the K kid members, our fourth and fifth grade kids who are in K kids run it. We have a committee of teachers who help with it. And we also get help from the key club members of the high school. So the kids and the key club members are the ones who are running the craft tables. So they learn beforehand what the craft is, and then they help all of the students and the community members who come in, and they create these crafts. The students don't take those home, they are then donating them to community organizations. For example, I think you can kind of see a picture here of a bagel. It's like a bagel, and they dip it in bird seed, and we donate those to Russell Woods Forest Reserve. We make bookmarks for the library, some other. We donate things to hospice, I have another one. Oh, we make a catnip toy for tails, so they make all sorts of things. So at the end of it, we just have these huge bags of stuff that go to all these organizations. And the kids just learn about how it feels to give back. And then we always do a food drive to our Spartan Food Factory. So it's a really great organization, and we're really grateful for all of the community support that we give for it.
The next one that I'm gonna talk about briefly is book lasers. I think we've been doing that for, what, like 20 years, I'm pretty sure, a long time? Quite a bit. But anyway, that is a morning club that we have for our second through fifth graders. Chrissida Green is a part of that, and she'll wave there. She's in a couple of these pictures, but they pick a book for each grade level and then just put it out. It's just a voluntary thing if you can get here in the morning. They have adults from the community, parents, anybody who wants to come, well, not anybody, but. Responsible parents who would like to come in and lead those small grade-level book clubs. The kids love it because they're reading with their classmates. They get to eat breakfast here with their classmates. They think that's really cool. And they love just discussing the book that they read. And we do try and keep the groups very small. It's a different book for every grade level. You can see up here, they each get like a bookmark that tells what has to be read for each week. So it's just something that we do kind of in the middle of winter when you can't really get out anyway. So just something else where we try and involve the adults. Questions on those two things? This last thing is something that I feel is really important, and I'm gonna ask if anybody wants to join in with me, feel free. You can see that everybody except for me is, is wearing their Be a Spartan shirt. They're much prettier on them than they are in this color. But we have just seen a huge need since COVID for social emotional support for our kids. Our, our kids are fearful of many things. They struggle with responsibility. They're not always grateful anymore for things that they have. We're finding that they can be judgmental of others. And one thing that I think we've really found as a staff this year and last year is they're sometimes not real respectful anymore. And to be honest, what we did on our very last day of school last year, we gathered in the library and we came up with a plan for this year. How are we going to tackle this head-on, united, to make sure that we can help our kids out? So we came up with, we're going to be a Spartan, and came up with, gosh, 20-plus words of what it means to be a Spartan. And you'll find those words on our Spartan head here. You can't really see them, but if you get up close to some of the T-shirts, you can see what they mean. So our PTO was kind enough to make these shirts for us. It says Be a Spartan on the back. I think we all wear them at least once a week. We all had them on on the first day of school, so that was nice. So parents knew who was a staff member. Every single staff member had one. No matter who you were, you had a staff shirt. And what we did, even though we had like 20 words, we came up with one word for each month of the school year that we really wanted to focus on for that year. So you can see the words that we picked. We're just gonna try and show you what we're doing for September, which is Be Unique. We tried to take in a lot of the things that we were seeing kids struggle with. So Sarah Lave again, and Amy Walker, who is no longer with us, worked this summer on a monthly character book list.
She didn't pass away.
I should have made that a little clearer. She's just no longer with us. She's moved to another district. But we came up with this monthly book list. So Sarah, I don't know if you want to talk about this a little bit?
You sure can. So like you mentioned, at the end of the year, we all got together and we decided what are really important character traits and themes that were important for our students to know. And so for us to be able to kind of talk about these traits and share with students, we created a list, so it's K through five, and each month, there is a specific book for each grade level to read. And so they can read it and they can discuss it. So there is a different, I think there's like 60 books in here, and they're all different books for each character trait. So it's linked there, so teachers just have to click on it, and then it will play the video recording of it. And a priority also for us with it is that all the books need to include diverse characters. So that was something that was really important to us as we are trying to celebrate diversity. So that's our book list, and we're really excited, and we're gonna continue to grow it, but it's our starting place right now.
Yeah, so thank you, because that took a lot of time to put all that together. Then each month, we will be doing an activity with our buddies. We've paired up our second and fourth graders, our kindergarten and third graders, and our first and fifth graders. And they absolutely love this. When it's buddy day, look out, because it's, it's great. So I'm going to have Beth talk a little bit about the empathy activity, and then we'll show you what our finished product looked like.
So this month, it was Be Unique and then Having Empathy. So one of the things we found was the whole concept of walking in somebody else's shoes. And just basically for younger kiddos, that that's what empathy is, is it's understanding what somebody else is going through. So we found an activity where they all got these little bitty shoes, every kid in the building, and they all colored them. So we have 200 and something shoes that we then put together a bulletin board that just says empathy, someone else's shoes, and we hung every single shoe. So we have, that's the tiny version, but it's actually right outside this door. And students, you'll see them walking down the hall and stopping and trying to find their shoe or looking at somebody else's shoe and like, oh, that one's really cool, or, oh, they made those look like, you know, the brand-new Yeezys or whatever. And so it gives them a chance to bond. Some of the classes did them with their buddies. Some of them did them as part of their SEL lesson for the day, tied in with their books. And then around the bulletin board, we ran copies of the covers of the books for this month and hung them so that way students get another opportunity to see those books. Or, oh, hey, remember my teacher read that, or, oh, I read that with my parents, or, hey, I saw that at the library. So it just helps to tie everything together because everybody comes down this hallway at least once a day. So then we'll update that next month with our new theme and hopefully do another activity that either students can do with their buddies or something that ties the whole building together for that, that school family.
Yeah, and it really is. I put the coffee pot spot of the building, but every time I walk out of my office, there's a group there, and they're talking about their shoes, or I like this one. So it is kind of where everybody gathers to talk, so, yeah. So that's Southeast Elementary in a nutshell. We appreciate you coming to visit. Thank you. If you have any more questions, we're happy to answer them. If not, we'll let you get your meeting done and get home.
Thank you so much for hosting us.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure to be here. This was a, this was a very special presentation. This is a little more in-depth than was normal again, so it was very helpful.
Great. Well, thank you.
Can we skip to another agenda? I don't wanna follow that.
You're the only one who can do that.
Yeah, well, that's not gonna happen. So that's in the interest of continuing to move forward, that's what we'll do. We'll start with a pool of graduation date. Not very exciting right now, but in May, it will be very exciting. Seniors will be graduating. Lucky to have a senior this year, so I'm looking forward to this date as much as anybody is. She's not, incidentally, but that's a whole other story. So graduation for us typically takes place on Sunday afternoon. We weren't able to secure that day and time. Mr. Carlson did an excellent job trying to find a day and time that was close. Friday, May 26th, at 7:00 in the evening was the closest that we could come up with. We'll still be at the NIU Communication Center. So we're recommending that the board approve May 26th at 7:00 at the Communication Center for the graduation date.
Is there a motion to approve May 26th at 7:00 PM as the graduation date for the high school?
Some move is one of our communication department is just throwing this date out there.
Yeah.
Second. Any discussion? But then agreeing with you that this, we've got to let people know so they can make plans. All in favor? Out of the way, opposed? Motion here.
The next agenda item under my report is six-day enrollment. So reporting enrollment in six days allows us to track enrollment over a long period of time longitudinally. Tracking enrollment has changed a little bit in terms of state reporting, but we've stuck with this date. A lot of school districts still collect and watch enrollment on the sixth day of school. It's long been a milestone for schools in Illinois. For us, August 24th was the sixth day of school. So what I asked Kelly to help me with this year was to take that sixth day enrollment and instead of just presenting those numbers on that day and comparing it to last year, she put together an enrollment trend over 10 years. So I'll show that here in just a second. We've got district numbers as well as numbers for every building. What you'll see is that overall, the data represents pretty stable enrollment for the school district. But what you'll also see is some fluctuations in each of the elementary schools. This data will be especially helpful. It will be one of the data points that's especially helpful when we're working through the elementary boundary study this year. So the numbers will be hard to read. This, we'll put this on the website as part of the presentation. This is six-day enrollment for the entire district. So you can see over a 10-year period of time, the numbers are very stable. Little fluctuation over the last three years due to pandemic. But what you also see over there over the last three years is kind of a trend moving back up again. So some of the students who might have left the school district, whether it was for homeschooling or to seek other opportunities for education for the children, are starting to maybe come back. But what you see overall is, I think, a pretty stable enrollment for the district. Also hard to see the exact numbers, but the trend I want to point out here is the darker bars are pre-COVID enrollment. Bless you. The orange bars are post, are the overall average. So what I wanted to try to compare here was what did enrollment look like before COVID compared to the average over that 10 years? And again, what you see is pretty stable when you look at those two numbers. The two on the far right are E C program, which you'll see later, as well as Life School. This is high school and middle school. High school on the left, middle school on the right. You'll see kind of a peak there in the high school about six, six or seven years ago. A peak in the middle school previous to that. So that group started to work its way through the high school. Little fluctuation here also. See that in the elementary schools here in just a minute. High school is probably the most stable, I would say, out of all the schools in the district. It's a little bit more fluctuation in the middle school. And here we get into the elementary schools. These are in alphabetical order, so we start with North and North Grove. And here you see a little bit more of that fluctuation on a year-to-year basis. So one of the things that I generally look for is, you know, where's that best deadline? If, you know, if you're looking at it from a kind of statistical standpoint, where's that trend line over the last 10 years? And you can see that at, here at North and North Grove. Excuse me. If you look at the last three years, North, we've seen a little bit up and a little bit down. We've seen a general trend up in North Grove over the last three years. And here at Southeast, you can see the trend there, kind of a peak a couple of years ago. It's come down and it's starting to come back up again. And at South Prairie, kind of the same thing over a longer period of time. Kind of a general decline, hit a, hit the low point about four years ago and started to work its way up again. Not quite last yet. We've got a couple more schools to go, but this is West Elementary. A little bit up, a little bit down again and, and kind of resembles the high school actually and somewhat stable, although there's a little fluctuation there. Two of the most notable fluctuations here, early childhood is on the left-hand side. Saw a peak. Obviously, this year is the largest number that we've had in early childhood. You may recall, Eve Welp, our early childhood director, came and presented the board in the spring and talked about enrollment, how that program's changed over the last couple of years. You've got to go back three years to see that previous peak in early childhood. And we've seen a, what I would describe it, at least in terms of this graph, is a rapid increase over the last couple of years. You all know that there's still a need out there in the community. Eve, I think if she was here, we've had this conversation several times with Eve. There really is a need in this community for early childhood and preschool services. So we've seen that number increase here over the last couple of years. Life School has kind of gone up and down. We were eight students there this year. We were 10 students a couple of years ago. 12 was the peak the year before that. That's really, I wouldn't say based as much on population data, it's just, this really has to do with needs of individual students. And some of those students are our students, Sycamore students, and some of them come from other school districts. I think that Big Rock and Dean Creek and some of the surrounding school districts. So this year, we're eight in Life School, down from ours a couple of years ago. I'm going to pause there for just a minute and see if there are any questions that the board may have. I can flip back and forth any graphs if you'd like to see them.
It seems pretty stable overall.
Yeah, it's, it's always interesting to look at individual program or school data. And then you go back to the district data and you see really very stable over the last 10 years. The challenge is on a year-to-year basis, especially with the boundary study is with the fluctuation that you see in the elementary schools, you know, using that data to make informed decisions with a whole lot of other data when we make those decisions about elementary boundaries. Also work the city and, you know, trying to estimate and project what population increases are going to happen and things like that.
I appreciate you getting the data differently than we started out. I just more comment more than anything as it's on this chart. Have you just randomly asked me, hey, 10 years ago, enrollment in Sycamore schools? Today, enrollment in Sycamore schools, I'm like, oh, it's a, you know, 100, 200 kids. And it's actually decreased to 100, which I would just really surprised by. I mean, again, stable, but I'm just surprised at that number.
And really, I think if you take out the pandemic years,
Sure.
you know, if you go back to seven previous years, it's even more stable. I mean, that little dip there over the last three years really is the only noticeable.
Probably where you're getting it from and I'm sure there's, you know, a factor or two to that, but yeah, it's hard to be big factor and that is a continuing to go up.
Yeah. And my guess is that, you know, 10 years from now, if we look back, that little blip would be the tail end and we see, you know, pretty stable still.
So going forward, we're really going to have to focus on relying on some of the city's data about where growth is likely to occur.
Yeah, and trying to project.
And how.
Been a lot of economic development in the community. Things like Facebook or Meta. How many jobs will that bring to our community? That's kind of hard to tell. I think we talked about this at the last meeting, that some of those employees aren't staying in the DeKalb County area. They're moving to Aurora, St. Charles or other areas and then driving to work. So how many of those jobs, those personal, those families will stay in the community? Do they go to DeKalb? Do they go to Sycamore? Do they go to other communities? Sycamore as a community has been pretty good about really monitoring growth and development and doing that the way that is pretty reasonable. Other communities kind of open the floodgates and that can really throw off things like enrollment and boundaries for school districts as well as a host of other issues within the community. So we'll have to work with the close to the city and what their development projections are. And there will still be some guesswork in that, but they'll have a better handle on that for the city than we will. Any other questions or comments? Okay. The last item under superintendent's report, this really came out of a kind of an email conversation that Mr. DeVito and I had about service credits. And, you know, I'm going to pause here for just a second. Christine talked about K Club and Key Club. Those are our two student service organizations that we've got in the district already. So they provide great opportunities for students to get involved with community service. Interact is another one. Interact at the high school and middle school and then Early Act at the elementary school. There are a lot of opportunities for students to get involved with service organizations or projects in the school district. But the conversation that Mike and I really started was how can all of our students get involved with student or service projects? So they brought up this, at this point, service credits for graduation. So I'll just touch on some information here. I do want to make it really clear, not necessarily recommending that we're implementing service credits for graduation at this point. Something just in the short couple of years that I've been here, I've had some conversations with high school administration and staff about. But nothing that's really formulating into a recommendation at this point. Requiring or encouraging service credits or projects to graduate, that's grown across the country. I'll talk about some statistics here in just a second. Again, this isn't a recommendation, just a conversation tonight. So I pulled up a study by the American Association of School Administrators. This is the national kind of parent organization for superintendent association. I A S A would be the affiliate here in Illinois. So between 84 and 1984 and 1997, that, the number of school districts, percentage of school districts offering, not requiring, but offering some sort of community service increased from 27% to 96%. Quite a large jump over that time period. The same study reported that the number of school districts requiring service credits for graduation only rose from 16 to 18%. So those two trends seem to indicate that a lot of schools are getting involved with service projects, encouraging students to get involved, but not necessarily requiring that for graduation. Talked a little bit about some of those reasons here in just a second. As with any issue, there are pros and cons or advantages and disadvantages. So some of the advantages, you know, the benefits to the community through the completion of the service project. Sometimes there's opportunities within the community, but manpower, resources can be a little short. So getting high school students involved can be helpful. There's an increased sense of community. One of the things that I've seen in my time here in Sycamore in the last couple of years, just the incredible community pride that exists here. So this could be an opportunity for high school students here in Sycamore to grow that bond even closer as they're transitioning out of high school, whether they're going away and maybe coming back someday or staying in the community. That's a benefit. That tangible connection and increasing public, positive public perception. So I have worked in other school districts where students were out, not necessarily required of or encouraged just for high school and students in general, but organizations like K Club, Student Council, Interact. You see those students out in the community. So it just builds that positive perception of the school district and the students and in the community. It's also an opportunity for real-life learning. So sometimes service projects can be more complex than just getting out in the community and picking up trash along the roadside or beautifying downtown, things like that. Sometimes they can be a little bit more complex. So it can be real opportunities for students. Some of the disadvantages or challenges can be assigning credits. How much credit is a service project worth, you know? Who tracks that? Does high school staff do that? Does the administration involve? To what degree are parents involved in that? Do they sign off on that? Safety of students, 10, 20 years ago, this might not have been as big a concern as it is today. So when you have high school students, you're requiring them to go out in the community to complete these service projects. Really have to be careful about ways that we can ensure safety of students. Give them some guidelines to follow and hate to say it, but one of the things we have to weigh is just the liability to the school district if we're requiring it and the students are out in the community doing those things. Transportation, some students, depending on the service project, may need transportation, may not have that available to them. So how can we, how would we support them in terms of getting them to where they need to go? Identifying community partners. Have to believe that in Sycamore, like in other communities, there would be willing community partners, but maybe not enough to provide opportunities for all those students. And then cost can be an issue. So there's a lot of great ideas, but a lot of those ideas of service projects can cost a little bit of money. Where does that come from? So at the end of the day, the last comment I'd like to make is, is while it is appealing for a variety of reasons, for a variety of legitimate reasons, it's clear that there are also some challenges. And I A S A recommended it in that study that as school districts move forward, if you're going to consider requiring service credits or service projects to be completed, that school districts just weigh the pros and cons of that and have a lot of conversation, not only with the school board, the high school staff, administration, but invite the community to that as well. So any decision moving forward really involves people, you know, from all facets of the community.
Steve, can I just make a quick comment before the board interjects?
Sure.
So just to bridge off this, so I've been teaching at our local community college. A lot of freshmen come from the high school, from other high schools. One of the components to that class that I teach is a service project, where we do a service project in the community, where they're supposed to come up with one. And it's startling to see the number of students who, like financial aptitude, do not understand the very concept of service. I mean, like the idea of doing something with little to nothing in return or helping someone else, you know, a lot of us might think that's first nature, but it's not something that is always learned. So my thought behind this is like we teach English, like we teach, basically in our raising the future generations of people, this is an opportunity for Sycamore schools to be innovative and build into the curriculum, service. Now, I'm not suggesting, because I understand there's equity problems too with this, but if there's even just a small component built into the school day for service opportunity, be it even six hours per year, where there's some during the school opportunity, like we just saw demonstrated here, of service, I think it could really put on the map for a ton of students and future citizens that there's something beyond ourselves. So that's, that was my hope and I really think Steve did a great job conveying the advantages and disadvantages. And again, to the innovative piece of Sycamore School District, hopefully this is a great opportunity for us, so.
Just knowing what it's like to have to work with students and credits. I think this is a fantastic idea. What comes to mind for me is when you have students that already are troubled and have burdens of trying to learn and then you add a service component, I don't, would not want that to become a negative. I would want service to always be considered. This is a positive thing, as you were just saying, kids need to know how to, need to learn what it's all about. But I just, I think it would have to be done in a way, and I'd love to hear what other, you know, other school districts that do this, just to see how it's implemented. Because some kids are just down to the wire getting, being able to graduate and then to have that hanging over their head. It's going to be, oh, God, I have to do that stupid service thing. I can just hear that. I would never want it to become that because as you said, Sycamore's a great community and I'd want these things to be real positive.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, if you are going in that direction, I would love to hear from other school districts that do implement this and just see how it's done, obviously, at some point. Yeah, it'd be nice to know.
Sure. I can share, and I know some board members probably heard my spiel early on because this was something I did bring up at least in some of my earlier years on the board, but just my own personal experience with it. And granted, it was a, it was a private school in San Jose, so much different, just atmosphere, different resources. But my personal experience was very positive with it. The school required 100 hours of community service. This was high school level, so nothing, you know, K through nine. You had to do 25 hours with the poor, 25 hours with the youth and 25 hours with the elderly. And then your senior year, you kind of got to do whatever you liked best out.
elderly, and then your senior year, you kind of got to do whatever you liked best out of those. So like a lot of kids, you know, for serving with the youth would be AYSO, assistant coaches, or, you know, referee games, or umpire games, or, you know, something that just got them out with, you know, working with the youth. You know, the elderly could be, you know, going to the hospital and doing some of the visits, the, you know, the well visits to patients, something like that. The poor, we did, that was my first exposure to Habitat for Humanity, and I loved that experience of getting out there and getting to do some construction work. I know our community has a lot of those opportunities. I think it definitely shaped who I was as a person, and it's probably the reason that I serve in organizations today, because I was kind of forced to experience that, so I think there's a lot of positives. If there's any negatives to being in this community, I think it's just that we have such a supportive community, and I've struggled with this just in our own service organizations of finding projects to support, because it seems like every need has a couple of groups already dedicated to it, and so just finding opportunities can be tough, because there's already people looking for that. You're competing with other, you know, organizations to find that time. So, you know, balancing how many hours would be required, I think is something that certainly needs, needs to be looked at. But I think there's a lot of positives. I know we just had to turn in a form, and anybody who was on-site when we did our, you know, volunteer work to sign off, and then I know that all went through the counseling office, and I know we've got, again, adding additional burdens to people who are already overburdened, but I think there are a lot of positives, but I agree that everything needs to be weighed, but it definitely had an impact on me.
You know how they handle the students that struggle to attend school? With your, with your experience, you know how they handle those students that...
No, I'm asking you.
Me?
Yeah.
Well, they're paying to be in my school, so.
Right.
That's why I say it's a different environment. Like, I don't know what happened if anybody failed to meet those, those requirements, because obviously you had a pretty decent incentive for being at school with that.
Because we have, we'll have to address that.
See, Spartan Stretch, I think is a nice, and that's why, like, again, Eric's thing was really ambitious, 100 hours seemed like a lot. I'm almost thinking even just six hours a year would be nice. That way, it's within a school year's period to address an act, if you want to go above and beyond. Sure, we already do it for tassels, as you get a tassel, but, but even during the Spartan Stretch, that's an opportunity that oftentimes it's a study hall for students, and everyone has it, and so, you know.
Like eight hours, just find a Saturday or a Sunday.
Right, yeah.
I think I could see it more if we presented it as a voluntary opportunity, so that we could build momentum, so that, you know, as more and more kids start to do it and experience it, they, they had a good experience, they would come back, and there's nothing better in terms of publicity than have somebody your own age or thereabouts tell you what a great time they had doing something or what they, what they learned. You know, I, I really, it seems to me that it would be almost self-defeating if you put somebody out there to do volunteer work, and they don't want to do it. You know? I mean, it, it just wouldn't be a good experience for anybody. But it does, this, this really does align with the strategic design, the good citizenship, that value that we have. I remember talking a little bit about this during the strategic design meetings, that, you know, there, there isn't very much buy-in for service these days. Service organizations know it, service corps know it. And if it's true that, that kids don't really have a concept, students don't really have a concept of what service truly is, this would be an excellent way to convey that for them, and for them to begin to understand that, yeah, there is kind of life beyond themselves, and service to the community, so. I would almost like to explore it more as an opportunity, involuntary opportunity, and create those opportunities for, for students to go out and do things versus, all right, we're gonna, you have to do this, or you have, you know, you have to have so many hours over there.
So my only worry with that is, right now, it already is an opportunity, just with the 100 hours to get the tassel, and I, and I think there's a really important distinguishment between volunteering and service, and this by no means would be volunteering, because you're right, compulsive is not volunteer. My, my real, I, I mean, I guess what I'm seeing other schools do successfully is, like an English class is required, and you learn some, and you may not like it, you may not want to learn about Shakespeare, but after you've read a play, and you go, oh, man, this is something I really, I really, you know, I like, I touched it, I got to see it, they, they really, they put me here, and that's, I think, what our job here is, is a board to expose students who may never have had that opportunity, may never have thought to have that opportunity. We say, hey, you're gonna read Shake, you're gonna read some Shakespeare today, you know, you're gonna do a little bit of service, and that, to me, is all of it, is that compulsive piece. But again, I see where, I think where the middle part is, where the meat in the middle there is, making it very, very achievable, so like, it's like, even if it's an hour a year, I mean, just a little bit, just some dedication, so.
Yeah, I think I would agree with Mike, only from the standpoint of, I think the opportunity is there now, and you mentioned all the organizations that we have throughout K through 12, that kids have those opportunities, if they're seeking it. I mean, Ryan Janisch has no shortage, or, sorry, Countryman has no shortage of people who want to do Early Act, the Interact Club, the K Club. I mean, those, those opportunities do exist for the people to reach out, to take advantage of them, but I think that there is a whole lot to be gained by forcing somebody to take that uncomfortable, perhaps, step into doing something that they wouldn't have otherwise. And it's why the rest of our curriculum has non-negotiable requirements on there, because I would have skipped, I think, a lot of classes, Troy, if I didn't have to, you know, go and take that, that history class or social studies, those things that poured me to tears as a, you know, second, third grader, but, so I would agree with you.
My thought about an opportunity, what wasn't, isn't that you join a club, because when you join a club, then you have, I mean, you've got the whole responsibility of being in the club and carrying out all those requirements. My, my thought was, as an opportunity, we as a district set up opportunities for service, and maybe we do it on a certain day, and maybe, you know, those students who want to go and do service get to go, you know, for an afternoon or whatever it is, to do, and let them have an array of service projects to pick from. And those who don't want to do it, they can stay, they can, you know, do their regular classes, they can do some other alternative learning, but at least we, we kind of provide these opportunities. And I'm thinking, if we, if they're limited opportunities, just so people can get their feet wet, you know, just to get a feel for, for what service is really like, hopefully we start to engender, you know, that sense that, oh, yeah, I kind of like this. And, you know, maybe that helps other service clubs, maybe it helps for other projects, maybe interest in the program grows, so all that we have to have two or three, four or five days where we do that. So, yeah, it wasn't, you know, that's, that was my idea of, you know, opportunity and organized effort to do.
Think outside the box, didn't, wasn't there a couple of years ago, and maybe I'm misremembering it, but didn't, like, the History Museum, didn't they set up something where we didn't have school for a day, but they set up a bunch of activities for, for kids to be able to go and to the History Center and do activities? I don't remember why school was closed on that day or for what reason. But what if we looked at, you know, what, and it doesn't have to be this year, but maybe next year, taking one of our in-service or vacation days where the kids maybe ordinarily is going to be home playing video games, because that's what my kids would be doing?
Right, right.
And partnering with some local organizations, say, here's a variety of activities that are available today, and maybe there's some other groups in town that could work with us, maybe transportation could work with us, to say, we will get kids to and from, you know, their homeschool to these, you know, pre-curated six or eight opportunities that we could support X number of kids, just as a, as a starter for a school sanctioned event as opposed to a club sanctioned.
Right, and that's, yeah, those are along the lines I'm thinking.
You know, and it could be a stepping stone, if that's successful, to maybe down the road, implementing more, getting towards requiring it if it's successful, and if not, I think that's a good stopping.
I could see that happening with maybe starting with one class, like maybe a freshman class, but you got 1,100 kids, you got to find.
Sure, yeah.
1,100 volunteer opportunities, I think that's, maybe I'm a little nutty, but I think there's not a lot to ask, but.
I think there's.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm thinking about the destination, the RAM can be whatever it's designed.
Depending on what, how we can find opportunity, I would hope there is a lot of opportunity to work this out there, but.
I think if we partner, and we're probably a little ahead of ourselves, but if we get to that point, there's a lot of service organizations, Rotary can want us, again, and a lot of other ones that, that we could partner with and make it an option.
The park district, the city.
Elementary schools.
Yeah.
Hospital.
Well, I think the, I think the, oftentimes, we think of service when we think of outside of the school, when we're thinking about something like this. There are an incredible amount of opportunities to serve within the school, you know? So what I would suggest is, you know, Mr. Carlson, I've talked about this, that, you know, I can revisit this kind of presentation, and have him have some conversation with, you know, his staff, and if it, if it grows late, so to speak, you know, we've, I can show the ideas that we've discussed here tonight, and it would be, we would still be ways off, even if there is momentum, you know, support for it, and kind of fleshing this out a little bit, but let me, let me just make sure he knows about the conversation we had tonight, and then have, ask him to just have some conversation at the high school.
Ken Monday would always organize those days, one, it was like one day.
So you really need some sort of city or county liaison to kind of coordinate with the service. Maybe the community foundation could work on that, or, oh, yeah, or something.
So, you know, I think we'd be done, I think we could create those kind of opportunities and hopefully generate momentum, generate interest.
I'll be glad to talk to Mr. Carlson, just get the conversation started at the high school and see where it goes from there. That's my last slide for tonight.
Anything else on this before we move along? Next then is open discussion and future agenda. Issues, observations, questions, future agendas? We have a couple items hanging out there.
Keep it, keep everything on a list if we add them as the opportunity arrives.
Checking those off, those opportunities. All right, well, then I need a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, discipline, or dismissal of personnel, student discipline, matters related to individual students, purchase or lease of real estate and imminent litigation.
Somebody?
Second.
Who's been seconded? Roll call.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we're back in open session, and at this point, I'll accept a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Seven.
There are seconds?
Seven.
Who's been seconded? Roll call.
DeVito?
I'm staying.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Anything else for the good of the cause? Motion due in there?
Second.
All there?
Aye.
All right.